Good evening, everybody. This is the Town of Carver Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the date of December 13, 2023. We are in meeting room number one in the Carver Town Hall. And we will begin tonight by going to the approval of meeting minutes for our last meeting of November 7, 2023. As is my custom, I have sent these minutes in advance of tonight's meeting to all board members for their review so that we can expedite this process. I want to ask now if everybody has received a copy of these minutes for our meeting of November 7, 2023.
Yes.
Everybody seems to be indicating in the affirmative, and I ask now if anybody has any changes, amendments, or modifications they would like to make. I hear nobody speaking up and see no hands, so I'll entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as written.
And Ms. Dahl, would you care to second that?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so these meeting minutes are approved as written. Next, we have received an email that was forwarded to me by the nice ladies in the planning department here in the town hall with regard to case number 125-19-2-R. So I'm going to take that one first, and then we'll go to the other matter which is on our agenda for this evening. But with regard to the petition of Jeffrey Benoit, this is a matter that comes before us again tonight following a request for a continuance the last time. This is a matter which I have recused myself from, but I will read into the record the email that was received by the planning department on December 6. It says, "The ZBA hearing for Jeffrey Benoit," that's case number 125-19-2-R, scheduled for December 13, 2023, tonight. They're asking for it to be continued to our January meeting. So that would be a second continuance, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly. Is that right, Mr. Barrington?
Correct.
It goes on to say, "I am scheduled for the entire evening of December 13, 2023. Please let me know when the January meeting will be." Thanks, Attorney Lawrence Hale, who represents the petitioner, Mr. Benoit in this case. So I will step aside, and Ms. Mello, if you'd be kind enough to serve as chair for any discussion as to this request for a continuance.
Okay. Any members not close enough? How is it now?
That's better.
Okay.
Yep.
Does anybody care to bring up any discussion regarding the request for the continuance?
I wasn't sure if I heard correctly that there is a reason they're at another meeting.
Attorney Hale said he is scheduled all night tonight and could not attend.
Okay.
I'm correct. Yes.
Well, I'm trying to remember what our -- I think we had a similar discussion, I don't know if it was about this case or whether it was about another one. I guess the question is, how many continuances do you get before?
And I do not think this case has been opened because we allowed him to withdraw without prejudice. So I am of the opinion that come January, if there's another request for continuance, I'll have to look further into what the recourse is. But at this point, I think we let it go for one more month. It's the holiday season. It's a busy time of year for people, so -- and see what happens in January. That's kind of how I feel about it. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant a continuance on case number 125-19-2-R to our next meeting in January.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I will say for the record that this request for a continuance was made one week ago, so this is not an 11th-hour request, and it is the second request for a continuance as the vice chair pointed out. So that's going to go over to our next meeting in January. We'll decide when that date is at the end of this meeting. The next matter that we have scheduled for this evening is a request for extension of a variance which this board granted on November 20, 2020, for 12 Pondview Way, case number 9-0-R. I observe counsel present with client, I assume, so please take a seat. It's nice to see you again. How are things going for you?
They're going okay.
All right. Happy holidays.
Yes, same to you.
To both of you.
This is Robert Pazan.
And can you bring the microphone a little bit closer? Because with the heating system in here, it's a little noisy.
Just lower the temperature.
Yeah, bring it nice and close to your mouth, please.
Shutting up.
Okay. So, Mr. Krieger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So I request this memorialized in the letter to yourself, Mr. Gray, on October 4.
Does everybody have a copy of counsel's letter, October 4, 2023?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Barrington?
Yes.
Mr. Poirier?
I --
You have it right there in your hand.
This is it?
October 4, 2023.
Oh, okay. There we go.
To my right?
Yes.
And Ms. Dahl? Yes, so we all have it.
Okay, thank you so much. So the letter, in essence, was seeking a continuance of the variance that was previously granted, as Mr. Gray had just announced. Combination of things happened. We had -- obviously, we had COVID and set everybody back. I made reference to the emergency extension that the state had adopted, which I'm sure you folks have dealt with time and time again since then, essentially a 15-month continuance. And so we had originally calculated under that extension to be good until February of '23. We had -- we have, because of the variances and because of the tightness in trying to put the lot together with a house construction, of which, as you know, the complete plans were done, the architecturals are done, we have Larry Page on hold as far as installing the septic system, the water help is on board, the Concom was on board, and we had three buyers that none of which followed through on. Although the plan was pretty definitive, to say the least, we wanted to leave it open for a couple of reasons: financial, one, and another one, every buyer, you know, that buys a house newly constructed, they always have their own ideas about, they want to move things around a little bit. Obviously, we weren't going to allow a change in the footprint. Bobby went down to the building inspector's office and spoke with him on a couple of occasions. He was all set to give us a little bit of interior movement on the construction. We just didn't want to build something out that was on spec. Again, part of that was financial and part of it was not to have to redo it or to redo the plan twice. So basically, one thing led to another, and the variance did by its own longevity run out, even with the extension, like I said, I calculated in that letter it would have been February of '23. So when I first got back to addressing the situation, there was about six months, you know, later, I couldn't make the last board meeting, which I was invited to by Mr. Gray for conflict reasons, and so here we are tonight. It was my hope that this could be granted administratively, because certainly to go back to the drawing board on this thing would be, you know, pretty problematic in terms of getting everything back together again. All the professionals that have participated in it are still, you know, on board with the original plan, and so that's why we're here. I understand we're here administratively, it's not a public hearing, and I very much appreciate the chairman's invitation to come forward and make the presentation. So I also read the -- as Mr. Gray knows, I'm attorney by profession, as my letter had indicated, and I read the combination of your section in the bylaw and also the state enabling statute to say that the board does have the authority to do this administratively. In fact, I have another case in Wayham that they put into the decision, in fact, we could come forward on a modification administratively without going back to public hearing format. So basically, that's why we're here, and I respectfully request that the board consider, you know, extension of the variance as far as a requested target date is concerned. You know, it's winter now, Bobby's ready to go into the ground, he's got a couple of people all lined up for the subcontracting of the foundation, cutting the trees down, and things of that nature. We will have to go back and retool with the Concom, but they've invited us to do that. And so in discussing with Gary Flaherty, he said, "Why don't you go to June 25?" And I said, "Okay, that sounds good to me. I don't know that we'd need that much, but, you know, a year extension would be fantastic to be able to get this thing finally done."
All right. Let me just ask you a couple of quick questions before I turn it over to the other board Does everybody have the original case?
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet. Do you see it, Ms. Cullum?
Yep.
The original case?
Yeah.
Mr. Barrington?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Poirier?
Yep.
And you acknowledge that you had it in Ms. Dahl as well. Okay, so we have the original case in front of us, and at that time, we granted dimensional relief.
See my letter?
Yeah.
The bottom of page two spells it all out.
30 feet of front setback relief we granted, 14 feet of setback relief on the northeast side of the proposed construction, 55 feet of frontage relief and 50,000 plus or minus feet of lot size relief. That's what we granted. That's what you're looking for now. You're looking for an extension of the relief for the variance that we granted, that specific relief that we granted back on November 17, 2020. Is that correct?
That's correct, and no changes in our request to the original variances.
All right.
Not one foot.
Okay. I turn it over to the other board members. Let's start with Ms. Mello.
Well, and I read this, and I understand COVID put everything upside down for a lot of people. I am a little concerned about the fact that even with the significant extension because of COVID and then adding the 15 months to the end, that it ran out in February, and we're almost back to February. So I kind of -- I'm kind of wondering what took us a lot.
Well, just as I explained, we thought we had buyers, the latest of which -- how long ago, Bobby, was it? No, the last one, like three or four months ago?
Yeah, we had people -- I almost had that house sold a couple of times before we were going to build it, and that's how we wanted to go, but financing.
Yeah.
And a few of my clients just fell through. One of my wives, Fran is getting divorced, she was a proud seller, I was a grandmother. So we've had a few people interested in the project, but not been able to sell it. So, yeah, so that's kind of why we haven't done anything yet. I was hoping to have it done two years ago, to be honest, and done and built and done.
And now with the interest rates, it's probably even hotter.
Yeah.
The other thing that I had a question about?
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We didn't want to build it in the middle of COVID or even close to the after. We didn't want a spec to sit, you know, if someone couldn't afford to buy it or something like that. So we didn't want it to sit out there and have our money just sit on up there. That was, you know, one of the reasons.
But this permit was granted in the dead of COVID. Why did you come and look for the special permit variance when COVID, when we were in the midst of COVID?
Well, because we knew the state extension of 15 months had been granted just after this permit was granted, so we figured we'd ride that to completion, basically, in that time period. As you folks know, and Bobby will tell you, you couldn't have gotten any better at work during that time period.
Yes.
And the real estate agents went in with things on their feet and the covers and things like that. So we just put the whole world on hold. I mean, sometimes, in all due respect, I know we all lived through it, we forget how bad it was.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you couldn't touch an Amazon box for two days because you're afraid to get COVID. My daughter just texted me, by the way, it's back up, and said six of her clients are canceled because of COVID this week. So, I mean, hopefully, we can get it done sooner than later. So the answer to the question is, we were going to ride out the COVID extension and didn't even really look seriously at potential bias till after that, and I had calculated the extension to February of '23. So we had some play, and to be honest with you, the real estate market was certainly better a year ago. I'd grant you that.
Yep.
We were -- in a way, we regret not doing it in that time period, but we had somebody that was that close to buying. And, you know, Bobby's a small builder, and, you know, we just weren't about to spec the house. We were not. We couldn't really do it. You know, when we first started, I thought we could, but we couldn't. You know, this was a lot that I had purchased many years ago, and it just sat there and, you know, paid taxes all these years. And finally, Bobby, who's been a client, a friend, partnering Celtics tickets with me, we said, "Look, we got to do this. We have to get this done." You know, that lot is too valuable to let sit there. It's a beautiful location. And so finally, we got a little bit serious, and that last buyer fell through just recently. So we should have come forward earlier. I acknowledge it.
And then you would have used it off soon.
Yeah, plus --
Really, you would be nice.
Plus, if any of you have been to this particular property, what's standing there is an old abandoned structure that first thing we're going to do is tear it down. You know, it's terrible. I'm surprised, you know, in a way, you don't get more complaints because it's not good.
Now, do you have a client at this point, or are you going spec?
No, we're going to build it regardless because now the financial ability is more available than it was, let's say, two years ago. And even though interest rates are rising, okay, it's a case of it's more available now than it was two years ago for us, for us, just personally.
Uh huh, yep.
I sold a piece of property that I have the ability to put into this here. So that was the one big deal, and that just closed last month.
The other thing that I wanted to bring out in your letter, it says, "I also make the assumption that exercise of the variance can be defined as a commencement of the construction, including clearing of the lot of the actual foundation and house construction." I would not deem clearing the lot construction.
You did, you said?
I would not deem clearing the lot construction.
You would not believe that?
No.
I try to -- maybe Mr. Gray can help me out here, because I try to find something specific on this subject of what triggers the commencement under the statute, and I could --
Jennifer, can you turn that off?
I tried it.
See if you can help her out, Mr. Barrington.
I think that's me in the lit. Yeah.
How many ZBA members does it take to turn down the temperature?
I did exactly what needs to happen, just said.
Yeah, I think it takes, after you hit it, I think it takes a little bit.
It does.
Before it actually shuts down.
Will you cut a dashing figure up there, Mr. Barrington?
I hit the off button, so take a moment.
I can hear. I know it's noisy, but I can hear fine. I couldn't come up with anything as far as the definition of what commencement. I'm sure this case law buried somewhere, but I couldn't come up with it easily anyway. Clearing the lot or put -- most towns would say foundation would be the commencement. If you say the same thing, then that's fine, too.
Well, it looks to me, not to steal your thunder, but it looks to me, the way you've written this, Attorney Krieger, that you're saying that the exercise of the variance commences upon construction, including clearing of a lot.
I question that.
So that's what you put?
Right. I question whether the -- I was --
You question your own statement.
Well, I was looking for guidance about that. I said I assumed that to be the case, looking for feedback. I knew this would be before the board, so I was just questioning whether or not. I also make the assumption, you know what happens when you assume? So as a result, I made that assumption that clearing the lot would be sufficient. I will tell you that some towns do say that's fine as long as the progress is made. You know, if that were the case, and just to be in good faith, if that was the case, and I made that assumption, and that was actually true, we could have cleared the lot two years ago, okay?
Right. You don't need to have permits to clear your lot. Maybe you do from conservation, but you don't need to have construction permits to clear a lot. And so just going in there from my point of view and starting to take trees down, so if you get, say, a one-year extension, and 11 months in, you move in there and start clearing your trees, you have not started construction.
Really? Even if there's stump in there?
It's not construction.
You're going in your own lot, you're cutting down the trees.
Yep.
That's fine.
Yep.
But when you start pulling stumps on the ground, obviously.
That's not construction.
Yeah.
That's how I feel about this.
I mean, I feel like the mortars is getting there and excavators pulling up.
Again, you don't need a permit for that.
I'm here to learn.
You don't -- I have a lot of land here in town, no structures on it. I could go up there anytime with excavators and tear stuff out of there and cut down trees. That's not construction in mine. That's bullshit. Other members may feel differently, and --
Well, it's like --
But that makes me -- that particular paragraph makes me uncomfortable.
Well, I say I assume. Some towns I know do want a building permit for even clearing the lot because they want the Concom to write off on it, make sure that we're not --
Well, if you're in wetlands, but if you're not in wetland.
No, but we're within the border in weather and vegetation area here. That's why we had to go to Concom in the first place.
Right.
The structure itself is outside. It's outside by about 70 feet, and so they gave us the benefit of being within 100, but after 50 --
60.
They're no touches, as you know. It's 50.
Yep.
So we satisfied them around 1. And so if that's what the board feels that you have to pour the foundation to commence, that's fine. You know, that'd be fine.
What's the status of this project with Concom right now? Do you have to go back before them for anything?
We do. It's really funny, because when I spoke with Gary Flaherty, he said to me, I said, "Can we have like a year extension?" And he said to me, "Why don't you just go to June of '25? Why mess around?"
You said that, yes.
That's what he said. But then he came back to me, I don't want to misrepresent him, because he came back to me, and he must have spoken to some of the commission members, and he came back and he said, "You know, it looks like you're going to have to reapply." And I said, "Well, here's what I got. If I don't have the board of appeals extension, I got no use for the Concom that only follows." So I said, "Well, I know Mr. Gray invited me to the board. Why don't we go there first? We'll come back to you second." He said, "That's fine." So we're on hold with them.
Right, so you have a little bit more work to do if you get past us tonight.
Right, and that's why I wanted a little extra time, because if they push us back to a rehearing process, I mean, I got all -- Joe Webby's still on tap, we got the original people that fed into the project, the original professionals, but, you know, a new notice of intent? God knows, you know? That's several months down the road, even that. So I just wanted some extension of time, because I know one thing, that even in today's market, which is still fairly robust, Bobby was just saying how the supply is very thin, even though things have slowed down, I'm not going to sell this property to anybody without permits in hand. It's just not going to happen, I don't think, not for what we've got invested in it. Many, 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 many years of taxes on this thing. It just sat on the shelf for the longest time. We kind of joked about it at the first round hearing, I think, as I recall. But so I want permits in hand, so that would be variance extended, Concom order of conditions reassessed and reissued. Then I go forward and say, "Look, we could do a turnkey. Here's the builder. You buy it, doesn't have to do anything but pick colors and maybe rearrange some of the interior."
Well, assuming you get the relief from us tonight that you need or the extension that you need from us, you're going to have to move with dispatch to the Conservation Commission, because typically, we will grant a year extension.
Right.
Now, I don't know where they are with their hearing schedule, if they intend to do an administrative approach to this. I just don't know, and I don't want to speak for them, but you've got that hurdle still to go.
I know that.
After us, and that's going to take some time.
That's why I --
So you're going to have to move, like I said, with dispatch once you get permits in hand, because that year can run out pretty fast on you.
Right. I know that.
Ms. Mello, do you have anything further?
No.
Ms. Dahl?
I do not, actually. Fran had --
She's going to thunder.
Actually asked the questions that I had, yes.
She does that to me, too.
Yes.
I don't have to go first. Prefer not to.
Ms. Cullum?
I don't have any questions.
The very handsome Mr. Barrington?
No further questions.
And Mr. Poirier, who's not quite as handsome, but still quite attractive.
We're all good.
Okay, good.
I'm in a room full of good luck, I think.
Yeah.
I must get right in.
So what's the pleasure of the board at this point? Well, I guess my question is, if we're leaning towards granting, I mean, what form does that take? When was it up in February? Their calculation is that it was up in February of this year. So, and how long was the original variance grant? How long was that good for?
I think that was --
Was it a year?
Two.
Two, two year.
Right.
And they're looking for one year now.
Two is according to statute.
Yeah.
But overlapping that was the Concom. The Concom was much later, but there were three. By the way, all those documents are recorded in the registry already. So, you know, we'll have to do some sort of a vote amendment type thing if the board's inclined to grant it. Same thing with the Concom, they'll have to reissue the order of condition, so we'll just refile it, that's all.
So you would be looking from us for some sort of brief administrative action, decision that you could put on the record?
That's recordable.
That's recordable, that says that we are granting a one-year extension to the variance that was granted by this board back in --
November 17, 2020.
2022, right?
No, 2020.
2020, excuse me.
So it's just basically a sentence or two that you would need from us in a letter form, I presume, that would be suitable for recording, or would you be looking for something more formal than that?
I don't know, you know, it's kind of not that common an event. I would think on the boards, of course, the more formal, the better. So if it's not a big thing to put it into a format that would be like a decision, that would be highly preferable.
Okay. So you good with this?
Thanks.
All right. So do I hear a motion to grant an administrative extension of the variance granted by this board previously on what date and year?
November 17, 2020.
And this extension would be good for one year from the vote tonight?
From the vote?
Okay. From the vote tonight, yes. Is that good?
I also would want to put something -- I also would want to put something in to qualify construction.
And how would you do that? What would you say?
I would say that construction, commencement of construction.
Is interpreted in this case to be?
Clearing of the land, foundation, and framing.
Hmm. What's your thought on that, Counsel?
It's pretty restrictive, because if, let's say it takes several months to get the Concomit in order, and then several, we don't have a buyer as we speak before you tonight, several months to get a buyer, we'd take the risk of put the foundation in.
Clearing the lot and putting the foundation, would that be sufficient for you to equal construction, as we understand it?
Would it be, would it be well and septic? Because you have to do some digging to get in there, that would be considered construction.
Yeah, the well in the property, if you see, the well is closer to the pond, and so, we haven't really done a complete test on that as far as whether we're going to use the same well or re-drill. But there is a line from there to the subject footprint. The septic will have to go in first. It'd have to.
Right.
And again, we've already lined up Larry Page.
I would think that that would count as construction.
What's that?
Okay, foundation well and septic. Permitting, permitting for foundation well and septic and construction of foundation. So, that way, they have their septic plan already laid out and permitted with Board of Health, they have the well, they know where the wells go, and they know where the septic's going, and the foundation is it.
Other board members have?
Within this year.
Within the one-year extension.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's what she's saying, Counsel?
Acceptable.
We always try to satisfy Ms. Mello.
I miss sharing.
Because those items won't vary.
Right, exactly.
So, even if we got into a buyer that says, I want to move these rooms around, whatever, it's not going to change those three items.
Right.
Right.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Are there any other comments, questions, thoughts that anybody has?
No.
Not me? Ms. Dahl looks like she's.
No, that's.
You're satisfied?
Yeah, I think that's, I was one there.
Do I hear a motion then to extend the previously granted variance for one year? And we're going to measure that from the vote tonight. Construction to be defined as?
Well and septic.
Lot clearing.
Well, well, septic and.
Lot clearing.
Well.
Lot clearing.
Yeah, lot clearing.
Yep.
Lot clearing, well, septic, and construction of foundation.
Yes.
Okay.
And that one-year, start the clock, Counsel begins to run tonight on this vote.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah. Everybody get it?
Yep.
Got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You got it?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I have a question for you. How long have you been practicing now?
I don't tell people.
Keep that to yourself.
I was admitted to the Nass Power in 1974, I was admitted to the U.S. District Court Bar in '75, I was admitted to the U.S. Supreme Court Bar in 1978.
So, '74, so next year is going to be '50 for you.
Right.
Wow.
And I still play full-court basketball with guys half my age twice a week.
God bless you.
For you.
God bless you.
I don't know how.
Yeah.
I think the mind over the body.
Well, the other thing is, you're not very tall. So, you're not going to be able to dunk the basketball.
No, no, but when a guy, when a big guy comes in front of you, you've got to switch off, you're in trouble.
Yeah. Well, nice to see you both and have a good holiday.
All right, gentlemen, have a good holiday.
Good luck with this.
Thank you.
Okay. So, you have a little bit of an administrative decision.
I'm retiring.
You want to retire? I'll retire, you can take over. But we're going to break you in, so you're going to begin to write some stuff. And you will write the decision on the case previous to this one, where they requested and were granted a continuance. So, we'll start with two. Now, I do want to disclose to the board that we have another case now in the queue. I will be writing the decision on this one. This is a, an accessory apartment case. So, we'll be taking, I'm sure, a lot of evidence on this one. The location is Holmes Street in Carver. So, I will try to get the preliminary information on this case off to you folks before our next meeting, so you can familiarize yourself with the issues and the bylaw sections which are in play here.
Okay.
Okay. That, to my knowledge, is the only case that we have lined up right now for our January meeting, the next one.
Well, plus the one that was continued.
Plus the one that was just continued. I don't know if there are any others that are coming in. I suspect not, because, you know, Christmas is very close, but that remains still to be seen. So, let's now have a discussion, since we're done with the formal aspects of our agenda tonight, formal case aspects, and talk about our next meeting date, which, again, will be in January. And we are now meeting, or have been meeting customarily, on Wednesday, as Mr. Barrington knows. And we have to be careful with Mr. Barrington, because he has a very busy schedule. So, we want to make sure that he's available. Mr. Poirier, though, who is the master of all scheduling matters, is now looking at his calendar, and do you have any suggestions?
I have no open dates in January, I'm scheduled every day. You know, this man is valuable, but God, is he busy. Anyway, what do you have? Well, I mean, I'm assuming that we're going to stick to the Wednesday, so, I mean, we've got.
The first Wednesday is the third, and there are five Wednesdays in January, so. Well, the third is too early, because you must be mindful of the fact that we have to get this new case published.
Right.
Right? So, we have to go out beyond the first, the first week in January. I'm thinking maybe the third week in January?
I think, is that the 17th?
Seventeenth.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Yep.
Mr. Poirier, the 17th?
Sure.
Okay. And that should give the nice ladies in the planning department plenty of time to get this published in the Patriot Ledger. If for some reason that's not possible because of holiday publishing schedules or any other issues that we might come across, then I will let you know, and we'll have to go to a different date. But for now, I think the 17th, since it works for everybody.
Yes.
Okay? And I will instruct the planning department people to notify the petitioner on case number 125-19-2-R, to give the petitioner, in that case, Jeffrey Benoit, a heads-up on when our next date is.
Yep.
I have nothing further tonight, I have no correspondence received. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to address?
I did want to ask, as far as continuances go, how do we find out what's acceptable and what isn't?
Well, that's historically, to my knowledge, been left to the discretion of the board that is being asked for that continuance.
Okay.
So, if they should ask for another continuance the next time in.
Right.
That would be number three.
Three.
And at that point, you'll have to have a discussion about whether you want to grant a third request with no further continuances as a condition, or whether you just want to leave that out and say, okay, continuance granted to the next meeting date, like we did tonight. So, sometimes, boards will want an end date for these multiple continuance requests, so that we don't have to keep carrying matters forward on our agenda. There have been times in the past where we only had one case, and then that case was continued, so we all come in, and then we have nothing to do.
Right.
And this happened repeatedly, if you remember, Ms. Mello, with the 40B case that came before. They must have continued that case about seven times.
Yep.
And finally, the person who sits in this chair said, enough is enough.
Yeah.
But we granted a lot of leeway on that, because these 40B cases are complex, and there's a lot of technical.
Paperwork.
A lot of technical submissions that have to be obtained by the petitioner. So, we granted a little bit more leeway on that because of the complexity of the matter. But that was months and months of continuances until we stopped it.
Yep.
And then when we said, no further continuances, the case went away. They dropped it. Remember that, Mr. Poirier?
I was not involved with that one.
He doesn't remember.
He's older than I am, he doesn't remember very well. I know Mr. Barrington, who's laughing at Mr. Poirier right now, was not on the board.
Correct.
Ms. Cullen wishes that she was on the board at that time.
No, good, I'm good.
Anyway. So, I hope that answers your question.
Yep.
This next one, if they request a continuance, will be number three. But I'm recused from that discussion.
Right.
So, I'm talking in generalities here.
In generalities, right.